It is eight thirty this morning. I will go ahead and call the meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order the first item on our agenda this morning, and it's an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the agenda as presented from Commissioner Gross, a second from Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to address the board on any item not on the agenda? Steve, have you had any correspondence from anyone?
None, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The approval of payment of bills and vouchers?
Move approval.
There's a motion to approve the payment of bills and vouchers from Commissioner Kaylee, a second from Commissioner Gross. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes from the 2022 Clay County Board of Appeal and Equalization are presented.
Move for approval.
A motion offered from Commissioner Ebinger to approve the minutes from the Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next item this morning is an update from our Diversity and Ethnic Community Coordinator and Public Health Diversity Equity Inclusion Navigator. We have Azad Berwari and Sarah Dixon Hackley. Good morning. Would you like to come up?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good.
Get your button. There we go.
Great. Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. It's an honor for me to present the topic of diversity, equity, and inclusion today to the Board of Commissioners. Diversity and equity are possible when others are accepted the way they look, the way they dress, the way they live, the way they think, and the way they express themselves, as long as they play, they work hard and play by their roles. Accepting and celebrating our differences nurtures a strong culture of diversity and inclusiveness. A sense of belonging incentivizes individuals to become more productive community members and better citizens. Today, inclusion is no longer a choice, but it's a need. In fact, the current labor shortage highlights this need. Minnesota has a history of welcoming immigration. European settlers immigrated to Minnesota in the nineteenth century. These settlers migrated from Sweden, Ireland, Germany, and Italy. By the early twentieth century, Poles and Mexicans immigrated to Minnesota. By the late twentieth century, Monge, Khmer, Laos, Vietnamese, Mexican, Salvadoran, and Karen immigrated to Minnesota. Kurds, Somalis, and Bosnian immigrated by the end of the twentieth century, and still others, other groups immigrated to Minnesota in the twenty-first century. Since I started working as Diversity and Ethnic Community Coordinator, I have visited with leaders and organizations of many of minoritized groups in the county. Leaders expressed concerns over a number of issues. These issues include what they view as a lack of representation in the local government and services, and a lack of opportunities for minoritized groups for resources. Also, I visited with agencies, services of the local government, nonprofits, and academics to explore various interpretations to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This position I carry, I currently have, provides a great opportunity to support the inclusion of minoritized groups in Clay County. Leaders have expressed confusion, frustration, and pointed to what they view as disparities. Already, the county's establishing disposition has made the needs of the minoritized groups more legitimate and provides them with an opportunity to communicate in real life with the local legislatures, the local government, and services. They can explain their difficulties and challenges they face every day. Also, they can express their needs and how to realize their American dreams. Still coordinating diversity, equity, and inclusion in Clay County is a difficult task to carry out, as both sides of the social equation have different expectations. There are differing and even contradictory views about both concerns and solutions. We are all faced with both challenges and opportunities in addressing these issues in Clay County. Our area does have a history of helping immigrants, particularly in the role Lutheran Social Services played in assisting many new Americans to move to Fargo-Moorhead area by 1990s and after 2000. But many needs remain. These new Americans came from war-torn areas and from quite different cultures. While they were lucky to leave refugee camps and to move to the Fargo-Moorhead area, they often received very little, far from adequate, very little training, far from adequate, to successfully incorporate in their new community. Language barriers and cultural, lack of cultural understanding caused much confusion and frustration. These new Americans needed much more public education, which could assist them in their social immigration process. Obviously, public education could be costly, but it could well be cost-effective, like prevention in health or mitigation in emergency management. These challenges decreased their chances of taking advantage of employment opportunities and other existing resources. Many of the challenges remain for the second generation of these earlier immigrants. For example, the school district of Moorhead indicates that seventeen point fifty-one percent of students need special education. However, the minoritized students make about eighty percent of that percentage. This reflects ongoing cultural challenges of inclusion. Despite of these issues, the good news is what we know, that people are highly adaptable to their new social environment when they are given the opportunity, resources, and incentives. These people are ambitious, but they may need some assistance to transfer their skills to fit the job market in their new community. Creativity and innovation occur more effectively when diversity, equity, and inclusion is embraced in the community. Therefore, innovation and creativity in general are characteristics of democratic societies. Today's job market is, to a great degree, is based on social networking. Quote, "It is not about what one knows, but about whom they know," end quote. Such an approach diminishes the value of diversity, equity, and inclusion. The majority of minoritized people, especially limited English proficiency persons, do not know managers and human resources. When COVID caused our lockdown, minorities, minority, minoritized groups lost jobs at much higher rate than mainstream people. Most of minoritized lost their jobs due to the nature of jobs and/or language barriers. When the job market started hiring again during COVID, minoritized groups faced more challenges than others finding a job. With this background and our area's history and diversity, my conversations with leaders of counties' minoritized groups leads to several recommendations for the Board's consideration. Recommendations are cultural and structural. The cultural ones, this community need a community center where minoritized groups, like mainstream groups and individuals, can have activities and events. Second, and where minoritized youth can have activities with the mainstream youth. Third, celebrating a day as Diversity Day in our county schools. Fourth, adapting diversity and equity policy at work sites. Fifth, supporting minoritized individuals who would like to start businesses. Structural or systemic recommendations. First, providing assistance to members of minoritized groups to authenticate their degrees from back home. Second, supporting minoritized individuals with teaching degrees and skills to obtain teaching licensure to work as teachers of color in our county schools. Third, encouraging and incentivizing minority students to join police academy. Fourth, incentivizing minoritized students to major in fields that enable them to work for services like public health, social services, and other services. Five, providing adult basic education with more resources, especially to retain its daycare program for minoritized students with young children. Sixth, increasing opportunities for learning conversational English language, so new Americans can more effectively seek and find jobs, employment, and retain it. Seventh, providing more training opportunities for minoritized groups, as the job market requires more skills. Eighth, discussing social service benefit package and incentivizing cash recipients who work instead of the current way by de-incentivizing them when started working. Ninth, making mental health resources more easily available to minoritized groups, especially many new Americans came from war-torn areas and experienced trauma. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report on that. The information, not only from your perspective and experience, is really important for us to hear. It's always, it's always important to hear a different perspective, so that you're the food for thought as you move forward in implementation. Certainly, as we, as a board, work hard to provide programs for all members of Clay County, it's important to hear what our diverse populations are saying in terms of ways we could better communicate the services that currently are available, but also how we move forward. And I appreciate that you have a list of items for us to work through, and certainly, as Steve can get us all of them. I was feverishly writing down, but did miss.
I have.
Great. No, I did miss a few. But I think that your perspective not only covers items that you think that the county can do a better job of communicating with our diverse populations, but also, I heard some snippets on the ways our cities can continue to do that in terms of education. I heard some ways that our schools will continue to collaborate. And those are important perspectives, because we are at the table in lots of different meetings with those entities and municipalities. And I think it's a work in progress, as all things are, and hopefully, we can find the action items on the county pieces that we could better bolster. Commissioner Kaylee?
Yeah, to your point on identifying what the action items are, I made a list here, too. And I'm wondering, I had brought this up months ago, if it would be helpful to have a committee with representation from maybe public health, social services, a commissioner, and then our two diversity folks, to sort of work on, okay, we have this information. What's the county piece of the pie, our actionable items, to kind of address some of the areas that have been highlighted here and see forward momentum.
Commissioner Campbell?
In speaking to that, I would like a copy of your statement today, because there are a lot of important features in there. And I guess, Commissioner Kaylee, going to your comment about establishing a new committee, before, I would like to see which recommendations might already fall under some existing committee before. And I would just as soon do that before we establish what areas might not be already covered through other committees. I know there was some of his issues regarding mental health. We have mental health committees. So some of those things, I just don't want us to get overlapped in the other areas, then where it becomes, sometimes we're already overlapped in some of these committees, and I'd like to try to avoid that happening again. That isn't to say that some of these things might require their own independent group, so. I guess that's just my comment on that.
I worry that if we were to parse it out to different committees, what would happen is that the work would get lost. And if we had a specific committee working on these types of issues, you know, then we could have forward momentum, whereas, I mean, I don't want Azad having to, or Sarah, running around to a whole bunch of different committees either. So some of the things that I had written down was, Mr. Berwari mentioned incentivizing working instead of de-incentivizing it by the loss of benefits. So that's a conversation that probably social services would need to be involved in, because we're often bound by statute in what we provide and how we provide it. But maybe we could think creatively there. He mentioned a Diversity Day celebrated in the schools. So while we do not have control of our school boards, we could maybe do a countywide proclamation of some kind and see if we could build momentum from there. Incentivizing youth to join the police academy, that's the Moorhead Police Department, I think, that does that. Is that correct? So that wouldn't be under the Sheriff's Department, but, you know, maybe there's a conversation that could happen there, or.
Training law enforcement officers statewide, and as individuals.
The youth.
Individuals get the training prior to applying for jobs, but departments do sponsor a certain degree, and the Sheriff's Department certainly could engage in that.
Okay. And as far as, you know, mental health access for minority groups, you know, social services would be heavily involved in that as well, and public health with messaging on addressing stigma and seeking help with some of those. So I guess, I feel like the work, ultimately, I would feel like the work would get lost if we parsed it out to a bunch of groups instead of consolidating into one.
I mean, I thank you for your report. I mean, a lot of this stuff we were aware of. That's why we hired diversity coordinators. You know, so I guess my thought is, you know, like you say, we should develop a community center. What are we going to emphasize to promote activities that are American activities, or they're from where they're from, their type of activities, that they can do their activities? I mean, I guess I was going, what are we trying to promote there?
Commissioner, people, different communities, when they are not interacting with the mainstream activities, they tend to socialize with each other. They don't get into the mainstream culture. When there is a community center, communities are coming together with the mainstream community, so that they socially interact more, they know each other more, they are more comfortable with each other, they understand each other more. In that sense, it would help.
Okay. Thank you. I guess a lot of your items, I feel, should be done by the schools. You know, I mean, there seems to be, the schools should be initiating and stuff like that. And as far as another, I mean, as far as Genesis about another committee, I don't know. I think we got so many committees already on this stuff, and it's just, I don't know if we need another committee to do this, you know. I think with you leading it and coming to some of the, it's got to fit into one of our committees that we have.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to suggest right now that there might be portions of the recommendations, whether they're cultural, structural, that may not require, be beneficial to establish a new committee for. We're hearing this tomorrow and seeing, or seeing this this morning for the first time. And just like Commissioner Gross just said, you know, a lot of the things that you have here are educational and deal more with educational institutions. That isn't to say that through you, just for example, we have, we have, what was known up until recently was the Clay County Joint Powers Group, and what is it called now? We just changed the name to it.
Intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental, and that includes school districts. And that's something that you haven't been a part of. But maybe, you know, maybe that could be a place where we could start, where you could come before that group and talk about some of these things and make suggestions, because there you have, you have the city, the county, and the school district all joined together in that group. But I guess, just before we want to start creating new committees, I just think we should see where we can, if we can take each of these bullet points and put them in the best place to see something positive done. So that's kind of, that's kind of where I'm at on it. I don't want to reinvent the wheel when we've already got certain groups put together that can discuss some of these issues and move them forward.
Well, I think this is really good, really good dialogue. And I think that's probably the most important thing that we wanted to have happen, is to have dialogues. And certainly, there's major work to be done, and we know that. And you're bringing information to us that will help us do the work. You know, I think maybe on the, the piece on the committee piece, I'd like to hear Sarah's report, and then we can kind of get the holistic look at all of it, and then we can better understand maybe the whole piece. So Sarah, if you will.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Well, I so appreciate having Azad here with me. One, for moral support, and two, also because I think he provides a lovely, I think, macro view of the issues. I probably comment it more from a micro perspective in terms of the day-to-day and interactions that we're seeing on the community level. What I did want to pass out to you, and if you don't mind, turning to this side first that has the tables. Earlier this spring, one of the initiatives that kind of was rolled out and tasked to me immediately was the distribution of COVID-related equipment. So both COVID tests as well as KN95 masks. What I tried to do was to track as closely as possible the distribution to the different groups that did, in fact, take these masks. Of course, it was all voluntary, not pressed upon them. But what I think it did do was hopefully give us a better idea of where some of these items were being taken, as well as interest, and potentially attitudes towards the reception of some of these items. Since that particular period of time, and of course, the changes in the numbers in the county, we have seen kind of a lapse, if you will, of interest in them. That doesn't mean that won't re-engage itself, of course. But communications with those organizations has been happening with myself. I've been meeting with the different groups. So in particular, we have Ishara as one, the New American Consortium, Cultural Diversity Resources. I also try to connect as regularly as possible with Moorhead Public Housing, certainly just to keep track of where people are with their numbers. And then, of course, the shelters. Right now, I know recently I did have a conversation with Moorhead Public Housing. They're doing quite well with their COVID numbers, keeping them down. There was one small recurrence of a second infection. But overall, I think most of the organizations I've talked to are doing much better, of course, than we were this spring. So those, of course, are all positives. On the second page, just kind of keeping abreast of some of the things that certainly I think I've been focusing on that are direct, I would say, kind of correlations to the COVID pandemic, or kind of outcomes, if you will. One of the big pieces that was mentioned by Azad was the aspect of mental health. And certainly, we know this is not new news, but it is in the framework of understanding what this looks like with some of our minority populations. And it certainly is framed in different ways. If we're looking at the conversation I've had with Moorhead Public Housing, they have expressed concern that they're seeing an uptick in onsite events that may require police intervention, as well as an increase in both termination of leases and evictions, a higher rate of both, that they, from personal observation, feel are related to health issues that are related to the pandemic themselves. I've also had conversations with more of the cultural community, and certainly, there's great concern along those lines as well, in terms of the mental health of their youth, as well as, of course, their elders. I think in terms of specifically what we're talking about, there is a more directed project that I'm working on right now. I've partnered with Rory Beal and Karen Nitsorski. We specifically are working with the three different multicultural groups that I referenced before, so Ishara, Cultural Diversity Resources, and New American Consortium. And those particular groups, we're really specifically focusing on, at least for my particular part of that process, is the communication piece. And trying to, I think, really engage the groups that are receiving this information, so that we can not only be sensitive to the cultural and traditional ties that they have, that they've brought here, and to hopefully bridge what we know from Western medicine about mental health, and be respectful to their traditions, to their culture. And so work together to find that kind of halfway point. So the process of language and communications is going to be kind of that next leg of how do we move forward with this, whether it's through social media, whether it's through, you know, storytelling, but empowering the residents themselves to have that information, and then, of course, carry that forward to their communities. When I look at some of the other kind of aspects of what I've been trying to do, I think the overall understanding of where I think our communities are at is incredibly important, right? Trying to take that climate assessment. So one of the things I did recently was partner with both Ubuntu Consulting, Letitia Mitzra, Helerud is the individual who heads that up, and then also the New American Consortium. They together, and myself, hosted a two-day conference that brought together service organizations from both sides of the river, and in the absence of Lutheran Social Services, really coming together and talking about where do we go now? What are the needs of our new American communities? And what are some of the issues that we're seeing? So it was an opportunity, more than anything, to re-engage those service providers, and I think to try to find out where our overlapping is happening, as well as our networking, and then also finding out, okay, what are the next steps, now that we, you know, are starting to have these conversations? And I think the last piece that I would just note is that I have been working a bit with the inclusive workplace employer piece. It's through the Regional Workforce Alliance of Northwest Minnesota. This is really an opportunity, I think, that, and I think Azad touched on it so well, that while we want to certainly work on building those relationships with these multi-communities, we also have to do the work at home, right? So if we're going to be hopefully espousing and building relationships, we also need to make sure that everything internally, that our own institutions are still making ourselves approachable, accessible, equitable to anybody who walks in our doors. So it's really an opportunity to kind of give ourselves a little bit of a self-reflection piece. So I'm walking through the application with one of the representatives from this particular organization, and hopefully using this as a piece for us to kind of almost self-audit our internal. our internal materials, and just kind of look at, are we providing information that is truly inclusive? Is it translated? Is it easily readable? Are we thinking about individuals who maybe aren't literate? So again, trying to kind of hit some of those core elements.
I appreciate that you, I'll comment on the rest of your, your presentation after this, but I think that, that is an important piece. And I know Azad and I had had the conversation about that when we had met for coffee last two weeks ago. But certainly, how do we work with our human resources and our technical IT department and, and personnel committees in terms of hiring and making sure that we have these policies and accessibility and readability on, on what we're putting out into the community? I think that is probably the most important piece, is the information piece. And, you know, certainly, as you identify any issues that we have maybe siloed, if there's anything that we can open up to better access, I think that's important for us to But certainly, I know that Kathy McKay and Rory are here as well, and appreciate the, the current focuses on, on what your, your work, work pieces are. I think those are, you know, certainly really important discussions to continue to have, and, and having the representatives, both on, on the North Dakota and Minnesota side, is important to hear, as we are really one community, working together to serve our community, the whole community, certainly important. And I think for the, the public to note that, that both of these two positions were really made available with American Rescue Fund dollars and created to help us develop and implement COVID-19 strategies to pertain to our diverse population groups within Clay County. And, and I know it's difficult to identify how COVID has affected all of us, but certainly our diverse populations is, is really important to understand. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I was going to also just touch base on how this all started. I remember through our CARES and ARPA committee, we had Hakun and Kuar were there, and they were giving presentations based on, on the need to have a different approach with our ethnic communities on dealing with the pandemic. They, they felt that there was different methods that were needed to educate them. And, you know, so we were excited at that point in time then to, that's how these two positions were created, with that in mind, and, and with that being the significant purpose at the moment. But we also talked about a position then maybe becoming something more of a need to continue beyond the pandemic in other areas, and that, and that's, those are areas where, where you have brought up, you know, Azad, some of the, some of the things that you bring up are, are beyond just pandemic issues, which is good, because, you know, we all need to be understanding on how we can make everybody have a better community, you know, way of life. So, so moving forward, you know, we're, we're going to go above and beyond, I think, what, what we originally started for. But I really am thankful for your, your presentation this morning, and your focus on those public health issues and the mental health issues. They were, they were upfront and foremost on, I think, all of our minds, based on, at the time of, of our needs. And Rory, you were really involved and instrumental in helping us move that forward. So, thank you. I'm, I'm going to digest some of this, and hopefully we can continue to improve communication and, you know, assisting in, in making things more understandable for all of our different communities that are part of our one whole community.
Commissioner Gross, and then Commissioner Kaylee.
I noticed that you've been working with a couple of different areas of health teams already, and Ethnic Self-Help Alliance for Refugee Assistance, Cultural Diversity Resources. I mean, we already got a bunch of committees going. I don't, I don't feel we need to start another committee, you know, in our, in Clay County. I mean, you're working on them, you're working with them, and I think that's sufficient. You know, we can continue to support it by supporting you guys. I don't know if we have to support another, I mean, I don't know if that was your intent or not, but I don't think we need to start another committee to enforce some more things, you know. I mean, I think we need to support the ones that have already been established and continue to support them, is my thought of that.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Sarah, under, in the mental health piece that you talked about under training, when we had the New American Listening Session, some of the leaders that came to that talked specifically about, and I know you're working with them, they were mostly the Ishara group that were there, that they wanted training to better understand who they should be referring community members to, and how to talk about mental health issues within their community. Is that encompassed under the training piece that you have noted on here?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that's exactly what we're trying to do, is give that information to them, but also allow them to bring that back to their communities. So I think, again, giving the tools that they need in order to have that, that language. I think that they're looking at the vernacular simply because maybe culturally, it's just not something that is the norm.
And with that, too, another thing that was brought up there was that, you know, while we're in regular communication with, you know, a lot of these, these groups, Cultural Diversity, New American Consortium, Ishara, et cetera, through your work, that a lot of these folks would seek out a religious leader, you know, if they're having a family struggle, and that might be how mental health issues are framed potentially. So are some of the pastors and leaders in the mosque being invited to some of these trainings as well?
Absolutely. And I think, I think that's an incredibly valid and valuable piece of information that we don't always think about. And I think if, not to say that we're identical, but I do think it's important to point out similarities if you think about the American culture and how we do have individuals ourselves who seek out support and connection back to our own faith communities. So I think if we overlooked that, that would be certainly a sore oversight on our, our part.
Thank you.
Well, I think, I keep saying I think, I'm sorry, but I think that's important because you're causing us to think. And I certainly respect Commissioner Kaylee's desire to have a committee to, to make sure the work doesn't get lost. But having these conversations and identifying these issues, for me as an individual commissioner and as a mom of children in a diverse school district, it is causing me to think about how I can take this conversation into the huge committee assignment portfolio that I have. And one of them is the PIT Committee that we'll meet here this afternoon. And Clay County does need to bolster our inclusion and diversity policies for the county. And I see now in this packet that you have an example from Sterns, and I think, Sarah, with the conversations that you're having about workplace, making sure we're taking care of ourselves in order to send a message to the community. And, and I'm, I have a portfolio of mental health pieces, having discussions in that. Commissioner Kaylee and I are on Community Action Lakes and Prairies. They're doing some pretty substantial diversity and ethnic community work, and I've requested that Azad be part of that dialogue. And I think it's important that the information that you're gathering and the tidbits of information that you're sharing with our administrator to bring to our department head meetings weekly, to make sure that we're, as department heads, hearing that information, and our sheriff's department is part of that, and, and Mark can collaboratively think about how we can encourage our communities of color and immigrant families to seek out not only careers in law enforcement, but social work or public health, or, this is a huge, huge piece, and it's not going to take a small committee to look at it, to, to kind of divvy it out. It will take initiative from all of us in this room, all of us watching it streaming and through minutes, to grasp behold of this, to realize how many people in our community, countywide, statewide, regionwide, do come from diverse backgrounds, and, and how we can continue to make sure that if we have an opening on planning commissions, we're seeking out folks that might have a different perspective than us. That's important. I have boys that are on a team that love when it's a potluck because a mom makes something that is vastly different than this Norwegian mom would. And, and I think that's, that will continue to be our identity, is to embrace the differences, but making sure that we're continuing to advocate for all of each other so that we can be as representative, represented in the best way possible. Certainly, respect the, the committee piece. I do struggle with, with what the, what the focus would be in, in terms of, you know, who would be identified as serving on that, because I, I do believe that so many of those groups are represented already in the dialogue, but I, you know, certainly whatever the board wishes. Commissioner Ebinger hasn't?
Yep. Again, this is something's got to be prioritized, but not by an individual commissioner committee. This is something that's got to be holistically approached, not just by the county, but by the community. There are objectives here that the county can certainly express support of, but they're based in state legislature or state agency policy. These are things that each of us as a commissioner, with our various portfolios, has some input on. But again, and I'll look to our county administrator on this, the real issues within our own entity, within the county, these are things department directors need to be sensitive to. They need to be, to understand, we need to recruit, we need to hire new Americans, we need to make our county more accessible. And in each of us in our portfolio assignments, we've got areas that we can express, we can support that and express it, but the county department heads need to be supportive of that, too. And I think to a great extent, we're seeing that they are. We just need to identify where we can be more effective. So, you know, I appreciate the very specificity that was given in some of these suggestions. A lot of it are things we got to take to our school boards, we've got to take to our legislators when we have those discussions, if we can ever get any legislation through, which is another issue, which I won't digress on, but is, it seems every meeting we have now, we realize what we haven't achieved in St. Paul. And, you know, diligence, I think, is probably what, what's incumbent on all of us as a, as a county, as individuals, and within this county, our employees. And I think a lot of these objectives are within that, that purview. The other thing I notice is so many things you've identified are things that impact all of our community. Mental health issue in this community, we know is, is everywhere, and there's a lack of resources and a huge need. As we try and address that need, we may, need to make sure everyone in this community has access to it. And I understand the, the barriers that are present for our minority and our New American population, but I'm also kind of encouraged by the thoughtfulness, we were at the listening session, of the people who, who are trying to address it, that we can bring on the Inoms and the pastors in these communities, because that is an access point that people are comfortable with. There's going to be things that we need to hear and things we need to do in order to accomplish that, but I think it's something all of us need to do.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. There's several areas that both of you have brought up today that require our attention. I want to, I, I want to say that I think mental health is probably, it is certainly a top issue that this county faces, every county in Minnesota faces, and every county in the United States faces. Mental health doesn't know what color your skin is. Mental health doesn't know what nationality you are, but it is there, and it's there amongst all of us. And we need to do better in terms of how we educate and give resources for those, for that, for that issue. And I, and I think, you know, in what both Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Moju have mentioned about the different committees we have, it has, it is a priority to us right now, and we continue to work on it. But I think we could probably do better by including more into those conversations. And, you know, so I, so I, I think that's one area where we can work on, to bring some more people to the table within some of these committees that are working on this. So I thank you again for your presentations.
Well, I've not seen any questions. Thank you so much. Certainly, your contact information is on our website for individuals that may want to reach out and have dialogues with you, but continue the great work. Thank you. Thank you. Item three is an update on ARPA funds.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. You all should have a handout at your desk. It looked, should have looked pretty familiar from some of our, our other updates. We do have some additional information that we'd like to talk about today, and, and so I just want to provide kind of a brief spending update of where we're at, and then also through our ARPA committee, identifying some of the, the potential funding, potential funding plan that's been brought forward from our ARPA committee for, for some discussion. As you recall, last year, we were notified that Clay County became eligible for a funding resource of $12,474,372. Received half of those dollars last May, and we just actually did receive the second payment this past month. Through the, through the ARPA guidelines, the U.S. Treasury provided different things of what we were allowed to spend the funding on. One of those was revenue replacement, which, which this board made the determination that they would utilize up to $10 million of that $12.4 million to, to utilize that, basically assuming that COVID-19 pandemic would, would negatively impacted Clay County. We talked about that having, doesn't eliminate the need to, to report, having reporting requirements, but it's certainly limited that, provided some additional flexibility in how those dollars would spend. This board was clear in that they wanted that ARPA committee to continue to meet and evaluate requests that came forward, and, and that's what we have done. Just a reminder, the, the, this program has, allows us to obligate the funds, or requires us to obligate the funds by December 31st of 2024, and we must, we must spend those funds by December 31st of 2026. If you take a look at the, the document in front of you, we have multiple, multiple categories in which we've spent our dollars to this point. We've allocated $2.6 million, $29,555. $2,129 of that has taken, and $55, or $555 has taken board action. And we've reserved an additional $500,000 for future public health response and for the board-approved items which have the potential to be approved for a second year. The back page of this document provides a reminder for all of the different items of which this board has approved, who, where the allocation went, and also the date of when the, when the approval was made by, by this board. And so with that, I guess I would, before I go into the second item about- And so with that, I guess I would, before I go into the second item about planning, I would yield for any, any specific questions on spending.
Questions? Commissioner Campbell?
I just missed what you just said. What was your last statement you made?
Oh, I just said, before I move forward into that, to the second part of talking about potential planning for, for the remaining funds.
Okay. I, I'll wait till I hear your.
Any, okay, any questions on?
Yeah, I got a question. Do we check on these, if we approve them, you know, do we check on them to see whether they're spending the money on that, or whether, I mean, I'm looking at, let's see, we hired, we bought some heaters. It was only $700, I mean, but did we give out any of the heaters, or do we know that, or have we just got them in boxes?
Right. Well, that one specifically gave us on our ARPA committee, and he did hand out to families some of those heaters. He does have some in office in case there's an emergency with a heater going out.
I guess I don't need to report on it now. I mean, we don't want to report on it now, but I'm just wondering, I mean, does anybody have to report on these things? We can pick any of them.
Yeah.
Pre-sentence investigation writer that they hired at the, I mean, is that working, well, probation, that's in probation, I mean, but is that working out, or is it?
I, it.
Did we do good, or didn't we do?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, it, it does, on a monthly basis, specifically for this item, we receive, we received notification from the Department of Corrections on, on the number of, of the number of pre-sentence investigations that were completed. There's some additional information that, that, on who that is, so we're able to verify that, that it did, did take place. And again, specifically with that item, we provided a certain dollar amount, and so they're only receiving those funds when they present us with an invoice for, for the service.
I mean, I appreciate the, the fact that we're able to do this, you know. I'm just wondering, is it being done, you know?
And I think that's a valid point. Part of, part of some of these hires for the, the employees, per se, were, were approved for one year and then up to one year, and, and through, as we just had on our last agenda item, that were, were funded through ARPA. There are ways of the board receiving reports on the work that's being done. Certainly, some of you are on building committees that have talked about the, the air handler replacement projects, for instance, those type of things. I do know that the rural driver for community action, Lakes and Prairies, had been open for a number of months. They just now hired that, and I, I think there's a means of reporting on, on all of these to know exactly what's going on.
And, and Madam Chair.
Very valid question.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, I think the other important thing, as I mentioned earlier, there are, while, while the one-time revenue replacement allowed us to, to limit the amount of information that we're required to provide, it didn't eliminate it. And so we still have to prove to the federal government, the U.S. Treasury, that, and completing reports twice a year, to, to verify that we are spending the money appropriately.
I mean, a lot of the items, you know, like air handlers and generation project, we have a bid on that almost before we, before they ask for the money. You know, some of these other items are up in the air. I mean, how much, you know, they really can't come forward with an amount till they really do it, probably, but it's just, I just was wondering whether there's any reporting back as far as whether the funds have been used for what they.
There, there is. Commissioner Gross.
Anything else in this piece? Want to go on the next?
Sure. The, the second portion, we just wanted to have some discussion on today through the ARPA committee. There's been numerous discussions throughout the board over the last, last year since the ARPA funds have come out, on, on how to best allocate the dollars. I think that this board has been very meticulous in wanting to spend it, spend the funds on things that have the largest impact for all citizens. And so one of the items that, that have come forward through the, through the committee and have, we've had some discussion again, is first identifying that $500,000 reserve. Again, our hopes is that the, the, the big wave of COVID is behind us, but we know that we're going to continue to see some, some additional flares up from time to time, and so we want to make sure that Kathy has the appropriate resources to, to address those when, when coming forward. And so if you take a look on your, on the front, back on the graph area, there's another, another graph that's new to this forum from previous years. And one of the things that we're looking to do with those funding is we've, we've already set aside about $500,000 for, for those items that, to deal with the public health pandemic in the future, but also some funding dollars that are tied to those positions that we have hired in and are looking to offer the potential of a second year. And so in the committee's discussion, again, with the uncertainty, we have until 2014, as I mentioned, to, to spend these dollars, and so we want to make sure that we have an adequate bank, excuse me, 2024, 2024, to, to, so we have adequate funding to respond to any COVID issue. Secondly, the board has had previous discussion, as we, as we know, we have some issues with our detoxification or substance abuse facility, and most recently, we've received a, a update on the first estimate of the, of the project, and are looking for some additional funds. Now, this board has talked about providing up to 6.6 million to 6.5 million towards that project. Our committee is, a detox committee handed that off to the finance committee, and there's some, there's been some discussion about being able to utilize between 6.5 and 7.5 million of the ARPA funds to, to the substance abuse facility, to kind of offset the increased costs of where we were hoping that project was going to be at. And the third item that, that we are, that we've discussed in our committee, is, as you recall, Cass County came before this board in, in looking at the need for a new regional dispatch facility. The facility is located in Fargo, and with the growth that we've seen in our communities, that, that facility is no longer able to meet, meet the needs of, of our, of our community. And so Cass County came forward to, to look at the ability and ask permission from, from Clay County, City of Fargo, City of Morehead, and City of West Fargo, to look at, at identifying a new location and a, and a potential pre-design cost of a new facility. And so that, we've had commissioners that have been a part of that discussion along with myself and, and Sheriff Empting, and that committee is getting close to bringing forward a, a project for your consideration. Based on the discussions that we've had, we, the ARPA committee would like to look to earmark about between $1 and $1.5 million for that potential, potential project. And so, in, in looking at that, if you, if, if you look at the allocations of what we spent versus what, what that min and max would be, as we look at the maximum amount, we're looking at earmarking about $9.5 million. Again, seeing that remaining yellow box in the middle would leave $344,816 not designated at that time. And again, that would be in addition to the $1 million reserve. If that, I'd yield for any questions.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, and a good report, Steve. And I, you know, I, I think it's important that, you know, our ARPA committee believes that that extra $500,000 should remain in reserve, just because of the fact that we don't know this, what COVID has done in a pandemic, if it returns, and, and we need to have some money set aside and reserved in the event that we have to fight that fight again. Both the detox facility, we believe, you know, we've, we've gotten a better understanding. The costs are, of course, are more than, than we had talked about early on. The $5 million isn't going to cut it in terms of doing that, so the 7.5 will help get us there. Even with the 7.5, we're going to still fall a little bit short. That's the discussions that we've been having through our, our finance committee, but, you know, we think that we can do that. And then the, up to 1.5 on the regional dispatch. And by the way, that would be Clay County's investment. There would still be, we have met, Commissioner Ebinger and I have, have met with, with the City of Morehead, and with the mayor, and Dan Molly, and, and they're also looking at investing some of their money into ARPA as well. What we are hoping for is that Clay County, combined between the city and the county, we will pay our capital costs upfront, so that we don't end up having to end, end up in some 20-year lease or something that we may not have as much control over as everything grows. So we've met anyway, from the standpoint of the city and, and the county, the committee that's together, and believe that that's the best option for us. When you look at that, that nine mil, that's basically $9 million between those two facilities, and I know Commissioner Kaylee, at one time, you mentioned something about investing into something that's the lasting legacy. Obviously, we, we'd hate to, we hate to talk about detox as a legacy, but it's always going to be a need. And it's going to be a need, and it's also, it also kind of goes into the realm of mental health issues that, that we continue to face. That $9 million using ARPA funds is benefited by every other property owner and taxpayer in Clay County. Because if, if we don't use these funds, then our, then we have to go to other resources, which really ultimately mean it ends up on your property tax statement. And, and so this is, this is something we can accomplish, two significantly important things. The dispatch is just as important to us, from the standpoint of all of our Clay County residents have to call 911, whether it's a mental health issue or whatever, that's where the calls are going. And so we need to invest into that as well, and, and although it's unfortunate that we have to invest in those things, I think it's, it's an appropriate use of ARPA funds. And I, our, by the way, and I know you didn't mention it, but our ARPA committee kind of unanimously suggested that we reserve those amounts for, for the future use.
Commissioner Gross?
I appreciate this report, too. I think you sort of requested it. I mean, I know we have committee reports after every meeting, and sometimes you don't get the full picture, you know? You approve one thing each month or each meeting, you know, and now when you see it all together on one sheet, it just sort of, you know, puts it together for me, and I appreciate what you guys did, and I appreciate the committee for what they're doing, too.
And if I can add, Commissioner Gross, one of the, one of the reasons why we felt it was really important that we, we bring this forward to the full commission today is the understanding of, of the needs that are already out there. We continue to get requests through ARPA for assistance in many ways throughout our communities, and it does, it isn't to say that those things aren't important and aren't necessary, but, but we, we felt it was really important to understand the, excuse me, the total allotment of ARPA dollars, and where the ARPA committee felt it was a priority to put them. So that, that's kind of the reason why we're, we asked Steve to give this presentation today. Thank you.
Given the funds that were allocated to Clay County and the cities and townships because of ARPA and the CARES Act, it's really amazing to see the work that was able to be done with those funds. I know this is just part of it, but I'm really hopeful that, that we were able to make investments in areas that made a difference, to mitigate the burden that COVID presented. Certainly, there's, there's situations of loss that you can never make whole, and we understand that, and, and that's hard. But I'm hopeful that moving forward, these will become lasting investments that continue to benefit our community and our county. And as, as we said, sometimes it's not glamorous or exciting to spend this amount of money on a detox substance abuse facility, but, you know, I'm hopeful that the families and individuals that could benefit, a lifelong benefit from, from that stay would make it all worthwhile. And certainly, Clay County has historically invested in programs that help to make people whole and, and give them the supports they need to go out in the community afterwards, and, and through that, those dollars added in a pending area, I'm hopeful that, that really that could be something that Northwest Minnesota is proud of. Commissioner Gross?
Another reason I wanted to report, I was just wondering, you know, when people hear that there's $12.4 million that was given to the county, I mean, me as an individual, can I apply for some of that? You know, so, and, and I see that these are all pretty much, I mean, they're all pretty much, they're all county-related, and I think that's probably the way we should stay at it, and I appreciate that. That's what being, what's being done.
Well, as you recall, during the first round, we did do a substantial outreach to businesses. That was, that was a major, major piece of that puzzle, and, and there were a lot of individuals that had businesses that had been affected that, that applied for that. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but a lot. Moving forward, there are ways that community members can access some of these funds. If you or Levon would like to have a childcare facility in Dilworth, there's some incentive money in, in that way, but certainly, it's limited to agencies through this round, and there are ways that you can access some of those, but it would have to be through an agency.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Gross, you, you raised some really good points, and, and, you know, we've, we've always kind of encouraged people to bring forward ideas and considerations for ARPA, but, but something to keep in mind, too, is that, is that Clay County isn't the only entity within Clay County that received ARPA funds. Each community, whether, you know, Dilworth, or Morehead, or Holly, they all received individual ARPA funds to help within their communities. What, what we're, what we tried to focus on here in the second round was, how do, how do we invest in everybody throughout the county being able to benefit in what we're doing? And I, I think we're accomplishing that to a great degree. Like you said, it's not glamorous when you're dealing with a detox facility or, or a dispatch center, but there are things that are needed within this community that you can't ignore. And, yeah, so, you know, so somebody who, who might have a question regarding something within a given municipality, you know, these, those communities still have till, they have the same requirements of 2024, 2026 to spend the money. Go to your local communities and see what they're doing with their ARPA money, and maybe help give some ideas.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yep. One of the things that we really, and Commissioner Campbell was part of that, and former Commissioner Whalen, when we were building the law enforcement center and the, I keep wanting to call it a jail, it's not a jail, it's a correctional facility, we went to the public with this, and I compared it to paying your light bill or your insurance bill. It's not fun to go out and buy something like this, it's not fun to spend money on something, but it's responsible. And we managed to put, put that forward in a responsible manner. I look at how we spent these ARPA funds, and one of the things, to allude to what Commissioner Campbell just said, all of these communities have received these funds, but we do something here, it's still, after 16 years in this community, amazes me how well we collaborate. And you look at the expenditure of money on a, on a dispatch center, and on a detox center, which I think the detox is going to end up serving a large part of this state, a large section here with a needed facility. And, yeah, it's not sexy, shiny, or fun, but it's necessary. A dispatch center, that when we have one, we've outgrown to this extent. Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're a communications wonk, this is really fascinating stuff, but for average taxpayer, they just want to be able to call 911 and get a, get a response from a fire department, an ambulance, or, or a law enforcement officer. And they don't want to worry about what it costs or where, where it's coming from. And. And we're working with an entire region to make this more affordable, as well as our partners at the city, our partners in the other cities in this county. I just, when, when you look at this, it's not just the expenditure of these funds, it's the efficiency that it's done with. And that always amazes me because I didn't see this till I came here. I did not see, and I worked with a lot of government entities in my career before I came here. I didn't see people reaching out and trying to get partners in and to make it more efficient and more effective for their taxpayers to the extent that we do. So we spent ARPA funds on this, but we did it, I think, prudently. And I think we did it to, to echo what Commissioner Kaylee wants. We did something we can leave as legacy, something that's effective, just as they did with the juvenile center, just as they did with the correctional facility and law enforcement center. This is just good government. It's nice to be part of that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Brian.
I, I just wanted to say something, too, on behalf of somebody, well, both as county attorney, but somebody who's also served on the ARPA committee and the CARES Committee. I think this board should be commended and appreciated for the deliberate nature that we've done, really all the way back to the CARES Center. I think the county is clearly much more pandemic-ready by the government center being purchased and allowing the workers within Clay County to have a much better facility and ability to work and operate through any pandemic, whether that's COVID or anything in the future, allowing the courthouse to become a much more effective courtroom and, and facility to keep justice moving during pandemic times. And so the deliberate nature, whether it was CARES or all the way through with, with the ARPA dollars now, I, just as the board's already said, the, the public safety piece, clearly, we are ready or we've, we've left funds available if there's continual healthcare issues and pandemic issues. And I think that's the important piece of the reserve. But to look at these funds to make sure that we're serving underserved individuals, make sure we're serving public safety issues, just as the board's already said, individuals who are calling 911 or individuals who need assistance and, and maybe suffering and self-medicating. So someone who works within these areas and has seen the need and sees the continued need, I appreciate what this board has done and continues to do. And so I believe that this is very much an appropriate use of these dollars. And as we look at kind of the end of both CARES and then the, the ARPA funding, I think this is a very good way to ultimately use them and complete the, the use of the money that's been given. So, thank you.
Steve, I don't believe you're asking for official action on the reserve, are you?
I'm not, Madam Chair. It's more informational, again, with the, the actions of, of the two building projects. Again, we would be coming forward to this board for additional information. And at that point, you would make that decision. And so, no, at this point, we're just identifying these different areas as, as projected areas that we would like to earmark for future spending.
Commissioner Campbell.
Madam Chair, I, you know, I do think that, that we, we need to, to give some sort of a form of a commitment to these things so that our administrator knows when, when other recommendations or
Requests.
Requests come in, that, that we know where, where we're, he knows where we're at in terms where we've had our, where we have commitments. So really, so, you know, based on his report, you know, we have about $344,000 that, that would be left to, to work with. And if somebody comes forward with a million-dollar request, you know, I think we need, Steve needs to know that he can tell them, well, we, we don't have that available. So, so from that standpoint, I, I do believe that we should have some sort of a, a action taken today that puts these dollars into reserve for these projects. And, and if, if it's okay, Madam Chair, I would, I would make that motion to reserve, or to add $500,000 to reserves, up to 7.5 million for detox and, and 1.5 million for regional dispatch.
Second.
There's a motion from Commissioner Campbell to reserve the funds up to the max, requested on the spreadsheet. A second from Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? I think that's, that's fair because then it does help us to respond to requests, maybe without having to have internal committees. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
I just want to make one final comment. A lot of this, you know, what the board has done, what the board has done, I just want to compliment Steve in what he's done, been involved in, and coordinated all this stuff. And thank you for the report.
You have a great team. Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Item four this morning is a request approval to authorize the creation and appoint members to a joint airport zoning board with Resolution 2022-21. To clarify, this is the discussion that we'd had maybe a few weeks ago in regards to what the city of Holly was needing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As, as you set it up, the city of Holly is looking to, to update its municipal airport zoning ordinance that first developed back in 1984. With the growth that Holly is seeing in their community, they're looking to, to make sure that they have proper land use and restricting certain areas that could be hazardous to, to the pilots and also people that would be developing around that area. And, and so the city of Holly has come forward and has requested this board's approval to, to create a joint powers zoning board to look at their ordinance. They've also, by doing that, have also asked that we have the opportunity to provide two appointed members to that board for the planning piece. And so, as Madam Chair has mentioned, you have two, two requests before you. Resolution 2021, authorizing the creation of the joint airport zoning board. And secondly, looking to appoint two members to that, to that joint zoning board, which would be Matt, Matt Jacobson, our planning and zoning director, and also Everett Nelson, Holly Township resident, as our Clay County representatives. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Thank you. To clarify, I would like two separate motions, one on the resolution, then one on the appointments.
Before we vote, I just wanted to double check on the resolution number 21. As I know, we did 22 and 23 last week. Is 21 the correct number?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner, Madam Chair, Commissioner Gross, Colleen had set this aside for this topic earlier. And so we, we're returning back to that.
Very good. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross to approve Resolution 2022-21. A second from Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, granted.
I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Jacobson and Everett Nelson to the board.
There's a motion from Commissioner Gross to appoint Everett Nelson from Holly Township and Matt Jacobson, our planning and zoning director, to that zoning board. A second offered from Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried.
Madam Chair, can I, maybe just a formality, but in the language on the resolution, it calls for a roll call. I don't know if.
Got it. Okay, let's go back.
According to the language in the resolution.
Colleen, do you want to clarify the motion? Roll call.
Commissioner Kaylee?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Miss, Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebbinghaus?
Yes.
Thank you. Item five this morning is an appointment of the highway engineer.
Thank you again, the commissioners. We are pleased to bring forward Justin Sorum as a, for the potential appointment to be the next Clay County engineer. This past week, we interviewed three very qualified candidates for the, this position through the interview process. Mr. Sorum really identified as, as a top candidate based on his interview, his intimate knowledge of the Clay County infrastructure and all of his well-rounded experiences. And so we would be bringing forward that request for this board. Just from a little bit of history, state statute really dictates the responsibilities of how highway engineers are appointed. Minnesota Statute 163.07, subsection 2, allows for an appointment, the first appointment of a highway engineer up to one year. All appointments by statute are, are reappointments are made in May. And so the request before this board this morning would be to consider the appointment of Mr. Sorum from today's date until May of 2023, at which time we would look at a reappointment, which by statute is required to be four years. And so with that, I would yield for any questions.
Thank you. Steve, also, this action would then vacate the assistant county engineer position? Are you?
We would be requesting backfill for that position.
I'll make a motion to appoint Justin Sorum, Mr. Newt County Engineer.
Second.
For the one-year period that you specified and.
Backfill. All right, the Commissioner Gross makes a motion to name Justin Sorum as the county engineer for a period of one year, for the appointment for one year with backfill. A second from Commissioner Ebbinghaus. Further discussion? Just a comment in, in regards to this interim period. Justin, you've done a phenomenal job. There are so many projects that have been going on in the last couple, couple of weeks, really. And appreciate your collaboration with the public to let them know what routes are going on and certainly what work Clay County is doing. So thank you for that and excited for this appointment for you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You wore a suit coat and everything. Okay, we are behind, I apologize. The next piece is committee reports. Commissioner Kaylee, would you like to start today?
Sure. On Wednesday, the 15th, I attended the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County meeting. We met at the Comstock House this time. It was fun to be in one of our county's historic places to have our meeting. $200,000 has been raised for the Yum-Cum ship gallery renovation. July is when that new exhibit in the ship gallery is going to be installed. And it should be finished by July 21st with a ribbon cutting on the 23rd. It will remain open and no content will be lost during the transition. So folks can still plan to visit the museum and still see all of that wonderful content there. And then the refresh will be happening July, as I said. This evening, at the Yum-Cum Center, there will be a Juneteenth event at 6:30. And that will be on Facebook as well. So you could attend in person or view that online. And then on June 28th, there will be another event coming up again on Zoom and Facebook or in person with the creator of the exhibit where they've colorized historical images of indigenous people. And Katie Ferris will be talking about his work with that. It's, oh, an incredible exhibit. If you haven't seen it yet, I encourage you to get out and see that. Thursday, the 16th, I attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC meeting. Lots of discussion at that meeting. We talked about new market tax credits. And Dakota Business Lending presented that. New market tax credits are administered by the U.S. Department of the Treasury. And community development entities are the authorities which deploy the tax credits. So you have to become a certified CDE Community Development Entity. So Dakota Business Lending was one of those. There's $5 billion annually allocated by the federal government for these tax credits, and it's all geographic-based. The Fargo-Moorhead area has a lot of new market area. Moorhead in particular, I saw particularly South Moorhead on the map that they shared, has a lot of spaces that would qualify for these new market tax credits. We also adopted the strategic playbook for the EDC and discussed Fueling Our Future, which is a 50-50 partnership between the Chamber and the EDC. They have moved into an office in Moorhead now with the Chamber in the Yum-Cum Center. And I think that's a really critical piece in furthering our relationship with the state and the resources that we have through the state of Minnesota. So I thank you, thank the GFM EDC for being responsive to our concerns on that and for the work that they are planning to do to increase communication with the state of Minnesota. Over the next few months, they're planning significant work around economic and workforce development, entrepreneurship, public policy, community initiatives, and convener and thought leadership. I spoke a little bit about the Valley Prosperity Partnership, which is the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC, Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber, Grand Forks Chamber. And they're meeting regularly to work on regional public policy efforts for economic development in the valley. And they're also working on establishing actionable objectives in alignment with Moorhead and Clay County's new strategic plans. So again, thank you to them for their responsiveness on that. Friday, the 17th, I attended our Early Childhood Initiative meeting. Azad and I spoke to the group on a training that we are putting together for the Early Childhood Initiative and their partners in the community with a grant from West Central Initiative. It's going to be a cultural competency training specifically dealing with folks working with new American families with young children in how to talk about mental health. And we hope to also highlight just some cultural competency pieces for some of our larger minority groups in the community with a panel of community leaders. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. Commissioner Gross?
On Friday, I attended the District 4 meeting, which most of us did. Julie Rehn, the executive director, reported on the, some of the programs they're looking at, like strengthening leadership and to develop programs to provide a good workforce for the counties. So there's things that, I think, county reports are interesting. I don't know whether they're bragging or complaining, but they're all interested to hear what, what's going on in the different, excuse me, townships, or counties, excuse me. Also, the AMC development updates. Looks like they're providing leadership in county government summer internship program. And also looking at America Corp's focusing on assisting counties with the opioid settlement. counties with the opioid settlement. And I don't know if that's going to cost us to do that, if we want to get involved in that or not, but looked like an interesting thing if they're, if it's, if they're just providing it for free.
Commissioner Gross, if I could just comment quickly. After that, I did come back and I talked with, the focus of the funding that they spoke that day was public health related, and I have spoken with Kathy McKay, and they have submitted for, for that opportunity.
Oh, okay. Very good. Okay. I thought that would take care of another committee to distribute those reports. I mean, we'd have help on that, so, okay. And then Monday, last night, I attended the Keene Township, Township Meeting, and then they had no complaints or anything like that, everything going good over the township, although I had to complain about the weather driving up there. That was, I picked a bad time to go, I think, but it worked out. That's, ends my report.
Keeping it interesting, right? Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you. On June 14th, we had our Finance Committee meeting, and the detox facility was moved forward to our Finance Committee for consideration of different items. We did talk about value, value engineering that has been completed. We talked about the footprint, and it's, it appears at this point in time that the single story without expansion to a second floor is probably the most appropriate at this point in time due to cost. There is a little bit of room to expand additional on the main floor if it were to be needed for additional office space. So we kind of moved on from that. We did look at different funding options and of course, the $5 million grant, and we did discuss ARPA funds of 7.5 million. And then we, for the remaining balance, the potential that could be there, we could be looking at the opioid settlement as one. We talked about other healthcare, or healthcare organization sponsorships potentially, reaching out to them. And also then, other area counties, how they might be able to invest into our project as well as potential use of county social service fund balances. I don't think that that would be necessary, but there, that is still an option. I think, based on the value engineering that's been done and then the new cost estimate, I think the grant and the ARPA funds and, and a portion of the opioid funds hopefully will cover the complete cost of that, at least as of today, based on the construction numbers we has as of today. I do, I know I did ask in the Finance Committee that when it comes to the opioid settlement dollars, I think we're going to need to hear from Brian and some of our other agencies about other potential requirements that some of those funds need to be set aside for. And I think, Brian, you were going to do some research on that for us, and, yeah. So, so we've asked him to research that, and we'll be hearing more on that later. Then on the, on the 15th, we held our county engineer interviews. As was mentioned earlier, we had three of them that day. We certainly had two that, that I felt were very qualified. One, one really didn't have the experience of, of county engineers, or for that matter, working with MINDOT, which is really important for a position of this nature. So, so the recommendation from that group, of course, was to appoint Justin. On Friday, we had the District 4 AMC meeting in Fergus Falls, which I attended along with others, and Commissioner Gross gave a report on that. I won't go into any more detail there. Yesterday, we had two meetings in regards to the landfill. The first one, we had a landfill construction financing issue. This goes to the issue of the increased costs and the contingencies. And we were, we were asked to review, based on contract, what items would be considered, additional funds needed based on, you know, inclement weather, pandemic, and other sources. And, and we did come up with, and I don't, maybe, Stephen, I don't know if you have the list, but, but we did come up with a list of, of $617,000 that were appropriate, that we felt were appropriate funds that they could ask for under section 8.3.1 of the contract. So after review, you know, our, our, our recommendation was to, to approve that, but part of that, you know, what we're suggesting is of that, not all of it goes to the construction contingency, but some of it goes to the owner contingency. And I think the number that we came up with was $77,799 would go into the owner contingent. That was based on, you know, we kind of came up with that using the, the de-watering numbers that we talked about there. And then the remaining, I believe it was, do you have the number, Steve?
Commissioner Campbell?
Five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, I think, is the number that would go into contractor contingency, of which, keep in mind that, that they already have addressed additional items. And then that would leave about 130,000 remaining in the contractor contingency once that, that money would be transferred, approved and transferred. So I, Steve may report more on that, but that's kind of where we believe the contract allows them to have the additional funds available. Then that, right after that, we had the landfill project review committee, and there continues to be, I mean, we did resolve one thing last week at our, at our meeting, but there continues to be an issue with the boiler installation. There's a pressure valve, relief valve that needs to be custom-made to handle our needs, and we just found out that that won't even be able to be delivered until September 15th. So we continue to have ongoing issues with the boiler system. We, obviously, we can't come to a substantially complete, I don't think, until we get some of these things resolved. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Thursday, I also attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Board of Directors meeting with Commissioner Kaylee. She covered it well. One item that I wanted to touch base on is tomorrow, the Executive Board of the Chamber and of the EDC will be meeting at Chamber Office to discuss the Fueling Our Future 2.0 that they're working on. The, the lay of the land on this has changed a little bit in that Cass County has decided to look at using a North Dakota statute that allows them to direct millage towards workforce development, possibly up to three mills. And that will include not just the county, but the cities within. So that discussion's taking place, and again, that's going to change the perspective on funding, the Fueling Our Future initiative. And that'll be discussed, be interesting to see, you know, what options are out there on, on this. Later that day, I attended the Lake Agassy Regional Library Board meeting and the Finance Committee meeting. We voted on the budget. It will result in a 3% increase, which is a result of salaries and some additional expenses that are incurred on, on the software licensing. And the increased letters will go out to all the signatories. Steve should receive it here shortly. We also discussed library bill of rights, some of the concerns people were expressing about books all over the country that represent views that not everybody agrees with, and how those are handled through citizen complaint process by Lake Agassy. We also looked at and voted for a letter to go from the board in support of the Library and Community Center Sales Tax Initiative in Moorhead this, this November. Discussed some of the upcoming events around the region for the library, and we will be, the Moorhead Library this Thursday at 7:00 PM will be featuring the first in their musical evenings, and this will be Post traumatic funk syndrome at 7:00 PM Thursday. If you haven't heard them, they're good, and it's free, and it's on the library parking lot, and be there, it'll be a nice evening. Friday, I also attended the AMC Region 4 meeting in Fergus Falls, was covered by Commissioner And then yesterday, I attended the Dancing Sky Area Agent, Agency on Aging Board meeting. Had an interesting update from the Regional Nutritional Services. Lutheran Social Services and Nutritional Services, Inc. provide the, the meals in this 21-county area. Congregate dining, they're trying to get that back post-COVID. It's hit and miss. Some areas seem to be wanting it back, others not, but we, they've seen a very large uptick in their initiative to get either pre-prepared or frozen meals into food pantries in the area. And some of their data indicates over 90% of the seniors that are coming in to get these meals have never asked for meal services prior to this. So I think it kind of reflects what we're seeing in our own pantries here for the population as a whole, is people are having hard times and they're trying to avail themselves of these services, and they need to be supported. Unfortunately, the additional four, I believe it was $4 million that was necessary to meet some of the needs. We don't have a problem in our region to the extent others do. Some have actually started lists of people who are requesting meal services, and they're going to try and provide them when they get the funding. But state funding was in the omnibus bill in the last legislative session to support the additional need, and it died, as a lot of the legislation did this session, and it's not being funded. So we put together, or we had a vote to send a resolution of the governor asking that these funds be allocated by the governor's office to augment the needs in other parts of the state. We had an update on county match funds, and again, it was kind of surprising to me, our, our match went down a little bit. And it's, as it turns out, of the 21 counties in Dancing Skies region, we are the youngest, with only 13% of our population over the age of 65. The other 21, or other 20 counties in the region have a higher senior population. So our match on that went down by $650. And that completes my meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Last week, I had a MetroCog meeting where we, they did formally approve the Clay County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. They commented on how in-depth and wonderful it was, and thank you so much to staff from MetroCog as well as our Planning and Zoning Department for helping facilitate that. And then they did discuss the Red River Greenway Study. If you go on the MetroCog website, you do have an opportunity for public input there, important input from the public. And we did approve the annual review of the executive director. I also attended the AMC district meetings in Fergus Falls. Great information. They continue to do a wonderful job in making sure the counties are aware of what is or isn't being approved in St. Paul. And then we, I also attended the Resource Recovery Contingency Discussion yesterday as Commissioner Campbell reported on those contingencies as we continue to finalize that. Will have to come before this board and for approval. That did conclude mine, and I just got an email from Commissioner Kaylee. She has one for you.
Thank you. Sorry. I wanted to add an invitation to the public to come to the Family Service Center at 3:00 PM today in Room 4. We heard a little bit earlier on some of the work doing, the counties doing around suicide prevention, and Lori Beal and Karen Scorsiggi will be giving their presentation on suicide prevention for the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council. So if you've never been to one of those meetings, this would be a great one to attend. It's open to the public at 3:00 PM in Room 4 at the Family Service Center. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday participated in, or Wednesday, participated in the county engineer interviews that have been addressed. Also had some discussion with Josh Hagemar, Labor, Labor Attorney. As this board's aware, we have nine bargaining units that are up for negotiation this year. And so we've made a request to have our first meetings, and we'll be coming to you as a board in a closed session to, to provide direction, probably in early to mid-July. 15th, I also participated with the MCCJPA members, not a meeting, but a discussion on hunting policies. We've had some discussion with the main, main board members, but we, today we had, that day we had Lieutenant Schroder, staff from MCCJPA, Mark Sloan, in trying to find better ways to clearly identify hunting and approved usages for MCCJPA lands, and if there's a way that we can collaborate on our GIS system. And so MCCJPA is looking at mirroring what we do here within Clay County as far as our public-owned lands, and they'll be bringing forward a policy to the MCCJPA at a future meeting. The following day, I had a MCCJPA prep meeting for our upcoming meeting. We discussed the proposed timelines for appraisals, acquisitions, and negotiations for Phase 3 properties in the Southern Embankment area. This includes the property in both Clay County and Wilken County. That's non-tillable land, building sites, woods, wet and grassland areas needed for, for the, for the project. That will be coming up at a future board meeting. Participated at AMC district-led meeting, just to kind of point out with the opioid settlement, I think we've had some discussions about understanding that we're going to get a lump sum of money here by mid-July. Interestingly enough, when we asked AMC if they had any additional information, they indicated that they did not. And so I'll update the board as soon as we find out what that information is. Also, in regards to the opioid settlement, we did have some discussion with, with both Julie and Ryan Erdman. Julie Ring, Executive Director, she was at the table in getting the settlement down and, and having some clear, clear ideas on opioid dollars and utilization of those funds. On 17th, I had a department head evaluation. On the 20th, we had a county wage discussion with Lori Johnson, Darren Brooke, and just some of the workforce challenges that, that we have. Continue to have those discussions also at our PIC, PIC group. Yesterday, also participated in the Resource Recovery Finance Discussion that Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell has discussed. And next week, my intention is to bring forward, so we can have a greater detailed discussion on what Commissioner Campbell brought forward. On the 20th, also participated in the Punch List meeting that has been addressed. A couple, just a few other different things. I appreciated the discussion on the committee assignments this morning. I think that we have to be sensitive in, in the addition of, of additional committees. I think that as a board, you guys are extremely busy. We're only further busy as, as we grow with our community. I think the, the least number of committee assignments that you have as commissioners is 27. And so I think the challenge comes with, with those, in most cases, come up per diem. And, and so I just think as we, as we move forward, I appreciated the dialogue. I just did want to touch base on the diversity agenda items, just to make clear for the public, is that from a compliance standpoint, our website is compliant with the accessibility of, of being able to ensure that, that our citizens can get the information in their language. Also, our departments have practices in place to ensure documents are available for, for our citizens when they come in in their language. And also, as, as an equal opportunity entity, we, we work, we work with the higher diverse groups, and, and many of our departments actually have licensing standards that have to show that we comply with that. So just wanted to touch base on that. And then lastly, oh, well, not lastly, Vaccine Clinic are, are coming up this, June 22nd, tomorrow, from 9:00 to 1:00 and 2:00 to 4:00. We have coverage basically from five, five years old and moving forward. I know there's been a, a lot of discussion on six months to five years old, and just have encouraged our citizens to look to the website because that information will be there as soon as the state approves, approves those shots. And lastly, just for, for. And lastly, just for, for point, Lieutenant Dave Johnson from the Sheriff's Department is retiring on Friday. He's going to be having an open house at the LEC from 1:30 to 3:00 PM for those interested. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Anything else? Brian? Colleen? Thank you. We adjourned.